Okay. Welcome to this second meeting of the Milton Planning Board for fiscal year 2018. And let's introduce ourselves. I'm Alex Whiteside. I'm the chairman.
April Lamoreau, member.
Julia Gavin-Burke.
Laura Masser, Assistant Town Planner.
Bill Clark, Planning Director.
Denny Swenson, member.
Right, that does that. We're going to meet again on August 10th and then on August 24th. We used to take August off, but we no longer do because we are devoted public service. The minutes, I've made some, I did do the minutes. I'm not sure where I put them. We'll find them, Julia. We may find them. Now, June 22nd, these are my suggested changes. And while we're reviewing them, we're going to do citizen speak. And citizen speak, any citizen who feels that they have an issue that the planning board should hear about, an issue or information that the planning board should hear about, they should share it. And any citizens want to participate in citizen speak tonight? Well, we do it every meeting, so you'll have another chance. All right. Now, it seems to me we should do the A&R next. This has to do with 120 Central Avenue. And my two issues. My two issues are first that the frontage is not measured on the setback line, but we need to get 80 feet on the setback line, shown on the plan. And the next issue is that I don't remember what Griggs Lane looks like, and so I think we need to take a site walk to see if it's an adequate way. So those are the two issues that I have. Anyone else have any issues? No one else has issues?
I agree with yours, yes.
You have an issue. Good.
I don't have an issue. We have a letter that was sent to the board today. One from Kathy Smith and the other from the Tobins, who live, both of these are abutters to this property. Both of us, that we read this into the record, from Kathy Smith. "I'm unable to attend tonight due to being out of town. Having read the Tobin's comments, I have similar issues about the access and aesthetics. I look forward to learning about the other public concerns along with those of the planning board. Thank you, Kathy Smith." From Ed Tobin. "Thanks for meeting with us yesterday regarding the subdivision by our neighbors at 120 Central Ave. Among our concerns are the following. We are not professional builders, and we realize that the board's discretion on reviewing proposed subdivisions may be limited, but looking at the proposed new lot, we don't think it's appropriate for a new home. The lot seems to contain a lot of large rocks and ledge, and it's difficult to see how a home can be situated within the proposed lot, at least in a way that would be aesthetically pleasing. Our bigger concerns relate to access. If the existing property is subdivided as proposed, the new lot will have to act, will the new lot will have access to Central Avenue via a new driveway directly onto Central. After subdivision, however, the existing property will be landlocked. It will not have access to the shared driveway nor to Central. Access via Griggs Lane is also problematic since the Griggs, since Griggs is no longer a street. It's been blocked off by one of the property owners and now serves as a parking space and driveway for many cars for the residents on Griggs. It would not seem to be a viable option for regular access to the existing property. Thanks, Christine and Ed Tobin."
Okay. So that indicates our site walk is in order.
So if I could just comment briefly. I understand the site walk, and I have no problem with the issue of a site walk. Griggs Lane is a 40-foot wide right-of-way. The pavement is approximately 20 feet wide. There are four dwelling units that front on that property. One at the corner, which is a two-family. There's a three-family behind it, and a five-family behind that, and then a single-family. And all of those have driveways that access off of Griggs. So they're all multi-families. This property's on the edge of the Residence B District. The other side of Griggs is Residence C. We were actually before the Board of Appeals earlier this year with an effort to condominiumize the existing building. The existing dwelling on the lot is almost 6,000 square feet. It's a magnificent old 1885 structure. It is no longer, and unfortunately-
It's been cut it, hasn't it?
The interior has been substantially-
Removed.
No, there's a lot of interior work going on inside, but it is 6,000 square feet. It has a servants', full servants' quarters on its third floor, and it would have been an ideal conversion, but we needed a variance to get there. The variance, the neighbors objected to that, and so the Board of Appeals did not feel like it could grant the variance. And it kind of speaks to a larger issue in the town, is that we have a condominium conversion bylaw that is for lots with a minimum of five acres. But we have this, and I'm starting to recognize other properties in town, just across Central Avenue at the corner of Valley, for example, is an 11,000-square-foot single-family dwelling. It just can't remain a single-family dwelling, given where things are today.
How big are those new houses on Bradley Road? They're about 11,000 square feet, aren't they, Bill?
Well, they're also-
On both Bradley Road? They're 11,000 or 12,000 or 15,000 square feet.
One of those is 12, yes.
So, you know, it depends. On Hillside Street, we've got a 15,000-square-foot house going up. On Harland Street, there's a 50,000-square-foot house.
But in a double-A zone with large, two-acre-plus lots, there's a lot of these dwellings are on 20,000, 30,000, 10,000-square-foot lots, and they're difficult to think about.
You're talking zoning now.
I know we are.
We're just talking about an A&R plan and doing a site walk.
I understand that. And so all I'm suggesting is that this would've, could've, should've been a logical approach to redeveloping this property by cutting it into flats.
Board of Appeals is a thoughtful board, and-
So in any event, we'll look forward, we will look forward to the site walk. We appreciate the board's time and-
What we'll do is Julia will find people's availability, and we'll see if we can't schedule a sunny site walk. And maybe we'll, maybe we'll go and look at St. Pius at the same time. And that means you could be with us for even longer.
I'd like to take, I haven't been in there in a while. I'd like to take a walk of that.
Bill?
I have one more comment. It came from Cheryl. Cheryl Taguyis, a member of the planning board. 120 Central Ave A&R application. "I toured this house with the zoning Board of Appeals and the Historic Commission some months ago. I think it would be a great two-to-three-unit condominium conversion, but it cannot be done the way under our current condominium conversion bylaw, since the area is less than five acres. I would like for us to consider amending that bylaw so as to reduce the acreage requirement. With the land subdivided, I question the financial viability of the extensive renovation of the existing house, with a new house so close to it, and fear that the next step would be demolition of the existing historic house and replacement with a new construction." Cheryl.
There's a suggestion that we write a condo bylaw tonight, and I'm not sure that we can do that.
Not sure you can get there.
Maybe you could sit out in the back and draw something up, and we'll take a look at it.
Sure. I'll start with what you must have written some years ago and try to improve on that.
All right. Okay.
Do you want to try and select a time now, or is that not something that you feel like-
I sort of like Julia to be able to, but let's throw out a good time for you, and then we'll see how it is for us.
Most evenings, Monday through Thursday, are good if you want to try. I know it's-
Could we do August 10th at six?
Yes.
August 10th at six. Okay. And Julia, what?
On the 10th, you also have a public hearing for 333 Brush Hill.
I understand that.
You're going to get to Central Ave and Woodmere and come back for this?
In the hour and a half we have? It depends on the traffic.
Hour. That's an hour, and I don't think you can do it.
Oh, it is just an hour, isn't it?
Well, we can at least do 10 Central Ave, I mean 120 Central Ave that day.
What's that?
We can at least do 120 Central Ave that day.
Yes.
And maybe, maybe we can make arrangements to tour St. Pius individually.
There is a leasing office open and available there, I know, so that you can-
Why don't we, why don't we work through the leasing office and pretend to be interested people?
Then you can get inside a unit.
And just-
That's right, we could get a real tour there.
And I know that there was an article in the front page of The Times the other day, but the lottery is now being scheduled for the four Affordables at Woodmere. The lottery will take place in September, but I know that it is important for people to hear about it, so I thought, take the opportunity while I'm on television right now to extend that.
All right. What you're saying, I think, is that they're going to be affordable units for people, for households at or below 80% of area median income, which for a family of four is about $72,000, isn't it?
Higher.
Higher?
Seventy is for a family of three.
All right. So it's somewhat over $70,000. And 70% of these units are going to be Milton residents and Milton Town employees are going to have preference in the lottery. And so if there are Milton residents and Milton Town employees in the lottery, they get the first crack at 70% of the unit. So it's worthwhile for people who know people who are at or below 80% of area median income, depending on household size, that they think about signing up. And they can go to the sales office and do that.
You can do that.
There's a public meeting coming at the end of August. Do you know the date?
Don't know the date.
It'll be back in the paper.
Okay. Well, maybe we'll get a little story in the paper, too.
We had one last week. We'll make sure that there's another one next week and the week leading into that meeting.
This is good. All right, well, thank you. Thanks for coming in.
I can be helpful.
If you come up with any zoning by the end of the meeting, let us know.
You'll help me, won't you?
All right. Now we're going to hear a presentation from Marian McKetrick, accompanied by landowner Peter Hicks and noted architect Hoyt Cousins. And Hoyt used to be a member of the Milton Planning Board, and this is like old homewake here. So come on up and tell us about, tell us about what's happening.
Someday I'm going to sit down, and I'm just going to fall right off these chairs, because they always roll back when I get ready to sit in. But anyway, not tonight. Thank you very much for allowing us to come in tonight. I'm Marian McKetrick, and I'm an attorney. I work for Peter Hicks. I'm also representing the Murphys at the end of Avenue A and the Schellers on one side of Avenue A. So at the moment, there's good communication. I also represented Barbara Piper when she subdivided her lot. All of these landowners have been talking to each other. They also talk to their other neighbors. Peter Hicks has been here a long time, 1987, I think. Am I right?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. He's lived in his property, which is on the left side of Avenue A and between Avenue A and Avenue B. So Avenue A is a right-of-way, similar to Hemingway Drive, goes off Brush Hill Road. It's parallel to Brush Hill Road, a bit parallel to Hemingway Drive, also very old, created around 1912 on a plan and in a subdivision procedure. And there were originally, I think, six lots in that subdivision. So Peter Hicks's land, which is on the left of Avenue A, about just beyond where the road branches into Avenue A and Avenue B, he owns part of one of those original lots, and there's a large house on the lot, and they're about six, six and a half, six-plus acres, six-and-a-half acres.
6.55.
6.55 acres.
I can pass outside plans if it would help.
Yes, it would. And so we have some plans. Hoyt Cousins has been, and also DeSalle Burke Engineering, has worked with Peter to look at possible ways to do some subdivision of his six-and-a-half acres. He's been looking at it for quite a while. He's not sure, you know, wasn't sure when he would want to bring something to the planning board, so since you asked us to come in, we thought we'd come in and have an informal discussion with you tonight and get your feedback on some of these ideas. That's not the site up there, is it? Or is it?
What's that?
Yes, it is.
Is it? Oh, it is, okay.
Is-
Okay.
Is Peter's property here?
Okay, that's Peter's property. Barbara Piper's-
Is the Murphys?
Yeah, that's the Murphys.
Is Barbara Piper.
Susan and Arthur Murphy are also here tonight. They're sitting in the audience, but they're certainly interested in this. Barbara Piper's property is that cluster of houses on the right on Avenue A. That map, yeah, that map shows the division of her lot into two lots, which was an A&R approval several years ago. And the current owner of the second lot, the new lot, is the Hack family. They are, they have developed plans and have worked with the Conservation Commission. There's a lot of wetlands on that lot, and reached a certain point in their development process. But my understanding now is that they may be keeping the lot, or they may be selling it, but they've actually moved into another house in Milton, because it took so long, partly. And so, you know, that lot is, a lot of work has been done on developing it and figuring out how to place a house. They had a very good architect they were working with, but nothing has been built there so far. So there hasn't been any activity, no impact on the road so far, but if a family did build a house there, then there would be some more use of Avenue A from that house. What you have, is this what they have?
Yes.
Okay. So what you have in front of you is a subdivision, a possible subdivision of Peter Hicks's property on the left side of Avenue A. So if you hold the map so that all the blank areas are to your right, and you go up Avenue A on the left, you'll see first Peter's house with the lot on it, and he accesses his house from Avenue B, and a second lot, which is a new lot, and then a third lot, which is adjacent to the Murphy property and would be, would be next to the second lot. So he's, he's, he's created adequate area and adequate frontage on Avenue A for two new lots. He worked with DeSalle Burke to delineate wetlands on, I think, I don't know, it's not an approved delineation, but he actually did this wetlands delineation. Is that correct?
DeSalle Burke-
Was he basing it on?
Used a outside established wetlands vendor. I don't remember which one it was.
Okay. But he did, he did his own work to delineate wetlands, so that's fairly recent work that's been done.
Right.
And Hoyt Cousins has been involved for a lot of good reasons, but one reason is that the second lot, as you can see, has a lot of wetlands on it, and the question is, can you place a house on this lot? So I know that the planning board doesn't design the houses, but, you know, if you looked at this lot without any attempt at explaining how you could develop it, I think you'd want to talk to somebody who knows something about building houses and could explain how you would try to locate a house in the lot. So if you're interested in more detail about that, Hoyt Cousins would be glad to talk about it. There are various difficulties with that second lot. Both lots have wetlands, and so on the second lot, you would be within the area of jurisdiction for the Conservation Commission, which means that when you remove trees to build the house, you would have pretty significant mitigation for those trees. They usually require three-to-one mitigation, which is, it takes the form of a payment, and the trees are planted somewhere else, so they're planted on the property. They can be planted in wetlands if it's a desirable thing to do. So I, you know, I thought you might like to ask questions. I wasn't, the reason we're here is because we came in two weeks ago to talk about the Murphy subdivision, and the question, of course, is Avenue A and what sorts of, you know, what condition does an Avenue A need to be in in order to be good access for a new lot, a second lot up at the end? The Murphy property is right at the end of Avenue A. But these two lots that Peter Hicks has drawn out would also be on Avenue A, and they would also bring their driveways in from Avenue A. The first lot would be quite close to the Hicks, Hicks lot and the access to the Hicks lot. The second lot, however, would be pretty far up, and it would be, it would be at that end of Avenue A. I don't know if you remember it, but we did do a site walk there, where it gets a little bit in worse condition and the pavement's pretty deteriorated. We know that there's work that has to be done on Avenue A. That's why we're here tonight, because you wanted to know what Mr. Hicks might be thinking about before you wanted to undertake any, you know, substantive discussion, I guess, of what might have to happen to Avenue A in order to allow the Murphys to do their one, their lot that they're looking for.
Well, since you've brought in your architect, why don't we hear from him?
That would be great.
We like hearing from architects. They're often not brought in.
We have our own.
We do have, we do have our own. And when Hoyt was on the board and we were doing the Carberry subdivision, he said, and I remember this, it was really, it was, it was a very significant moment. He said, "Let's bend the road a little bit," and it made all the difference.
Well, I don't remember that. I've been asked to come to speak rather only about fitting a house and a driveway on this rear lot.
Which is Lot Two, as shown on this plan.
It's Lot Three, as shown on this plan. Marian referred to it as the second lot, but in reading the plan, Peter's house is on Lot One. Then there's Lot Two and Lot Three. So I-
Oh, Lot Three, yes.
Well, I have another package, somewhat duplicate on the first page, but the second two pages describes how a house might fit. Marian, can you run? So the second page in this package shows, and I have them on boards here in case we need to, to show and tell, sort of thing. The second page has a site plan of the lot showing how a driveway would come into really the only access point of the lot, and roughly how a lot, a house might be sited back from the 25-foot required boundary, as well as a 10-foot construction, construction process, buffer zone for activity of staging, the whole sequence of construction. The third page of your package is in a little bit more detail, giving you perhaps a better sense of a site, I'm sorry, the site section with how the contour is on the site. The contour dips down toward the road. Is that for me?
That's for you.
And a house currently drawn in this site section, about 3,600 feet, 1,800 square-foot footprint, with a garage coming in on the lower level, below the main, below the main houses, below the main levels. I was distracted by Bill here. With a little bit more detail of the site plan below the section, which is consistent with the general lot plan. So it is obviously enough tight quarters. It seems to be able to work for an above-average size house, and we thought that might be helpful for you to see it fleshed out a bit.
You'd have to fit in a septic field somewhere there.
Yes, you would. Current septic technology allows you to put drain fields under driveways, but the lot has not been perked. Our investigation so far has just been focused on the dimensions and the area. Didn't want to take it any further until we got a little farther along with the discussions with you folks.
There is a sewer line at Avenue A. It only goes up to the middle or just beyond it, up the Piper property. And I know the original intention of the Hacks was to connect with that sewer and bring sewer into their property, but that's still a good distance from both of these lots, so. And I, am I correct that in Lot Two also that you would, you probably have a septic system, but you haven't perked the lot?
I'm going to get the number of lots, how it's distributed, right? Okay, so, a question about Lot Two.
Are you planning on probably having a septic system, but you haven't perked that lot over there?
I haven't planned yet, but I mean, the, on this initial plot plan, you can see where the septic field is on the main house. And I'm no expert on septic, but I, that was a replacement maybe within the last 10 years. And I know the gentleman who did it, he went down 10, 12 feet or whatever it was, and it was still gravel, gravel, gravel. So, again, I have not done that, so I don't know. I would note, though, that Lot Two is actually fairly proximate to the sewer line. You're correct that Lot Three is well down the road.
Well, what we wanted to find out, the reason we mentioned your property is that the proposal had been made to develop Avenue A at its furthest, furthest point. And obviously, the way, the nature of the way, the construction of the way, the design of the way, would depend on how many houses might be using it. And on the triangular, on this, you show a house there, and-
That is, Alex, that is the former, remember Thelma Pope?
Yeah.
My house, that was, until I got there, that was the carriage house. And then when Thelma sold to me, well, yeah, there was a, there was a court decision on that, wasn't there? When, which preceded me. When she sold me the house and the property, she broke off the carriage house and the one acre.
Okay.
And they, and she and Ralph Pope moved there.
It just wasn't shown on the, the small plan, and so I was just wondering.
The house footprint?
Yeah.
So if Avenue A were improved, I guess the question would be, would you help pay for it?
Well, Arthur and I have discussed that. Is that your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, Arthur and I have discussed it, and, I mean, the neighborly thing to do is share- is share the cost, at least to the extent that I use it.
Right. Yeah, well, I mean, I think there's just a general feeling that Avenue A is currently not in a street-like condition.
Yeah, it's relatively good. I haven't been, I haven't walked it in a little while. I think it's relatively good until you get near the brook. So, and then, you're correct, it certainly hasn't been repaved in...
In a while.
Gosh knows how long. And I have had no cause to use it. Their predecessor, Langivan, lived there for a long time, and before then, Clapham. And my memory's not what it was, but I don't remember the last time it was paved.
And this development possibility that you show is, is a real possibility. It's not just a theoretical possibility.
I think, in your own humorous way, you're asking me whether I'm wasting your time or whether this is something that I would pursue.
No, no, no. I don't think we're asking if you're wasted. When I say theoretical is that you say, "Look what I could do, but I'd never do it." Whereas a real possibility is saying, "Look what I could do, maybe I should. It's a good market, maybe I should do it."
I guess the latter.
Yeah. I sort of guess that. So, April, what do you think?
Well, I'm wondering if, for my benefit and for the benefit of the viewing audience, Marion can review for us what the proposal was we heard last week, so we can see it all in totality.
Sure. And as I said, Arthur and Susan Murphy are here, have been involved in discussing what's happening with all of this property, and they were recent, you know, they only purchased their land, you know, fairly recently. Arthur and Susan Murphy have purchased what was the Langivans lot at the end. The Langivans lived there for many years, but they did, they bought that property kind of when they were close to retirement. I'm not sure the Murphys are close to retirement, but we were talking about it the other day, and in terms of life stages, it's similar, you know, their children are grown, and they wanted to move into this house. And they see the size of the lot, and they would very much like to create a second lot for one of their children to live in. And we explored, you know, accessory houses, accessory buildings, you know, options. There's just nothing in the zoning in Milton or Canton that lets you do that. So the only option is to actually create a lot. That's the only legal way you can put a second house on this six-and-a-half-acre property, which happens to be just about exactly half in Canton and half in Milton. So we got to that point. We conceptualized possibilities, but we knew the next step would be to talk to an engineer. David Crispin came in two weeks ago, and he has been working with them on concept plans and showed them two or three ways that they could achieve proper frontage if they were to create a new lot. Because the problem is, this lot is at the end of Avenue A, technically only has about 30 feet or whatever the width of Avenue A is at that end of frontage. So if you subdivide the lot, you not only need to create frontage for the new lot, you need to create frontage for the existing lot. And that's why the engineer came up with the idea of continuing on the path of the driveway, but continuing it as a road. And that, if you did that, you could subdivide with land on each side of the road, and each piece would have frontage. And the other feature is that each piece would be both in Canton and in Milton, which gives you more options for connecting to water, because Canton will not connect to your water, will not allow you to connect to their water lines if you don't have land in Canton. They want a substantial amount of land, so they can lean it if you don't pay your water bill. They used to do a lot of those connections without requiring it, but they don't do it anymore. They've had too many problems collecting their money. So the other option that Mr. Crispin explained to us two weeks ago was that the Murphys could purchase some land along the sides of the edges, perhaps some from Peter Hicks, perhaps some from the Shellers on the other side. And they can do that to create frontage on Avenue A. And it's a pretty, it's a lot of, it's a lot of elaborate purchasing to do in order to do something that you can also do just by continuing the course of Avenue A on your existing driveway and achieving frontage by doing that. And so they said the preferred option for them, or the engineer felt the preferred option, might be to continue into the land and divide the lot and create frontage within the lot. So we had a discussion with the Murphys about what, and we also had somebody from DCR with us two weeks ago, because DCR has become involved because they have taken by friendly eminent domain taking, one of the Sheller's lots from their A&R plan. And they're also going to be receiving some additional land from the Shellers, from the property the Shellers own that has frontage on Avenue A. And they have...
Is this property owner?
Yeah, the Shellers have retained the right, if necessary and if desirable, to sell a small piece of land or a somewhat larger piece to the Murphys. But if they don't sell to the Murphys, DCR will get more land. And so for that reason, and for other reasons, DCR thought it was a nice plan to do it the other way, and so, you know, that part would be left intact. There's also wetlands that would, might be impacted if you used access from that direction. And DCR was certainly interested in the Murphy's idea that possibly they could create a conservation easement on one end of their property, because now that would connect with some of the other property that DCR is receiving.
Can you remind me, there was a drawing with some bump outs?
Yes, and I didn't...
On the sides of the road to provide dual access for cars in both directions?
Yeah. I did not bring the full set of drawings.
Do you have that?
It's probably somewhere on there, but...
We have it.
What the engineer did was to try to show you where, without having an issue with wetlands, you could create bump outs as you go along Avenue A. You have to, you have to improve the surface of Avenue A, but this addresses the issue of width and what you do when you want a vehicle to be able to get out of the way, or if you have an emergency vehicle that wants to get through. So one of those three, let's see.
Is that the...
It may be the red, the little red.
The red would be bump outs.
So this is a private road. What would be required to make that happen?
It's a 40-foot to a 30-foot right-of-way. It's only a 10- to 12-foot deteriorated pavement. So I believe that the right-of-way accommodates the bump outs, but if you wanted to make them bigger, you'd, you'd have to have an agreement that it was acceptable, I guess, with the Shellers. I don't think there would be a problem with that, because they already have an agreement that they can purchase some of the Sheller's property if they need to.
So it would just be...
I didn't get into that discussion with, you know, a better person to address that really would be the engineer, and I certainly can send it to him and have him give you a comment back.
The first one, if I'm reading this correctly, not the very first one, the one else is at the top of the curb. I'm looking at this map, that's on my land, so I think the easement is plenty wide to create them, but at least in that case, it can come deeper onto my land.
Well, that's why I'm wondering, what would it take to actually make that happen? How many different property owners would have to be involved?
Well, the intention was that you use the right-of-way. With these small, private ways, they look tinier than they are from a right-of-way standpoint. But you also have to deal with the presence of wetlands, and you need to be careful about what you put near those wetlands. So he was talking about absorb, you know, surface that could absorb water, but could also hold a vehicle, and he had some ideas about how you could do that. My understanding was it would all fit into the, fit in the right-of-way. But I imagine that we could work some...
With 40 feet, I would think you could.
Yeah, with a little bit.
I would think you could do that.
Yeah, but I don't know if it's 40 feet the whole way. I think it may be 30. I have real difficulty myself reading this drawing, but I think it turns into a 30-foot right-of-way beyond where Avenue...
Yes.
Quite a bit further beyond, but you can see where that is. So we might need to be looking at that. And of course, if it's on the side where Peter Hicks's land is and it's benefiting his property, I would think that we could work that out, as long as there isn't an issue with wetlands being impacted too much. On the other side, because the Shellers have been working with Murphys, I also believe that if it were necessary to work out an easement, we could certainly do it. And the Hacks, who haven't had to do anything, you know, they're not required to do anything to the roadway, most likely would be willing to do that kind of thing in order to help this happen, if it were necessary. But I haven't had a specific discussion with Mr. Hack about that, because he's in the process of probably deciding whether he's going to sell his lot.
So the question before us is, what do we think? There's no official...
No, 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 no.
This is not an application.
There's no question before us. This is simply a presentation.
This is a question. Okay. So Alex, before I started on my questioning, Alex said, "April, what do you think?" Generally, my philosophy is that I would much rather see previously disturbed land developed, as opposed to, you know, green space, however. And I'm actually very much concerned about this particular area because of its environmental condition, but I did hear from DCR last week that they felt as though finding a way to do this as an A&R would be a preferred option, because it would do more to preserve more land. And that really speaks to me. If that's what the environmental experts think, then I'm certainly going to take that under consideration. I, it sounds to me like the potential maximum here is a three, three to four home net increase, if all things are considered in the, is it the Hacks?
If you include the Hack lot, yes.
Lot would be developed, and Lot Three, that's potentially impacted by wetlands, is developed. I think the concern for me would be the same concern that I have on every A&R, which is access. And I like the bump out model, because I think it has the least amount of impact to the environment, but that's a philosophical discussion at this point. And if and when we get an A&R application, it's based on existing conditions. So, those are my thoughts. I think, I think I would favor an A&R application if it could demonstrate appropriate access during all-weather conditions for two vehicles to pass, and that could demonstrate the least impact to the environment.
Well, an A&R application takes the road as it is, not as it might be.
That's what I said.
So, I mean, if they came in with the road as it is, it would not have bump outs. It would be just what it is.
Exactly.
If they were suggesting bump outs, they would have to have a subdivision application.
Or they could find a way to construct the bump outs before they came in with an A&R.
They could construct a roadway before coming in to us, but if people on the board didn't think highly of bump outs, as I might say I don't, it might be tricky. It just seems to me that they don't certainly have to do a 20-foot pavement, but I'm thinking that 14 feet might be, might be something they could do without disturbing the area unduly.
So I guess I should rephrase. I mean, I liked the bump outs, because it seemed to have the least impact on the surrounding environment, but if there was another way to demonstrate adequate access in all-weather conditions for two vehicles, I would be pleased to see that application. But as Alex said, and as I was alluding to, maybe not as clearly, what we see is based, you know, when we have an A&R application, we have to base that on existing conditions, not what we might do in the future. So, I mean, I would really be concerned about access, I think, if there's a way to do something toward that end and still do an A&R. Perhaps that's a solution.
Well, in any event, yes.
Did you mean to say that you thought a 14-foot-wide drive would accommodate two-way traffic in this low-density situation?
Well, I mean, it would have to have a, have to have a shoulder.
Yep, okay.
But not a very big shoulder.
Right.
That's sort of my thought.
Should I presume that 14 feet is 14-foot footage?
Yeah. I mean, that's what I'm saying. I, you know, I can't imagine that I would, I would think 12 was, I've been with all these houses. I mean, you've got four or five new houses, potential houses. That's a lot of houses.
No, that wasn't the purpose of my question. I mean...
But the, what the neighbors think, I mean, if everyone in this neighborhood gets together with a good plan that a traffic engineer says this is, this will do the trick, I mean, who are we?
Well, the other consideration is the fire department for public safety access.
Right.
That would, of course, happen, and that's always part of what you do. In fact, it's really critical that the fire department endorse a proposal, because if they don't, then you're not going to do it. I've looked at these roads with the fire chief a number of times, because we've had a number of applications. It's kind of interesting. On the one hand, his position, he will take it very seriously, and any improvement in the width is going to help, certainly, but he also says, "I, we provide fire protection now, and we have for many, many years." And the first thing he does is he brings his new recruits out to Hemley Drive, Avenue A, and about 20 other, or many other, roads like this in Milton, and he wants them to know where they are, and he wants them to know what they're like and how they need to use their trucks on those roads. But that isn't to say that he wouldn't have preferences.
Yeah.
So we always would consult with him.
We've heard from him on other, other A&Rs that he was not comfortable with and made some, Bill made some comment that he wouldn't perhaps be able to access some of these homes, and they would be basically on their own for fire service. So we obviously don't want to support anything in that, in that realm, I don't think.
I don't think anyone would want to buy it if they heard that either.
Yeah, I know. Well, I mean, it's a hot market here, Marion.
Yeah, well, no, I know.
People are taking lots of risks these days.
Well, this is helpful. Keep going if there's more that you, if you have other thoughts in terms of specific ideas and recommendations. We didn't get too far with this last time, because we wanted to know what Peter Hicks was thinking about. And he's thinking about two lots, so that's the amount of traffic and so forth that would be added, and it's something that you need to consider. You certainly have one lot that's there, even though it hasn't actually been developed yet. It's there and will be, I think.
Well, the potential use is important, but how you know your neighbors feel about all this is, especially the people down at the beginning of the Avenue A. I'm not sure we've heard from them.
Yeah, I know, I know the Murphys have talked, everybody, and the people at the beginning, at least one of the families, said they'd like to see what their actual plans are before they decide, which is the right view to have, I think. But everyone has been looking at what they're talking about. I don't know whether Peter has talked to neighbors or not, although he's right next to them, so perhaps he has. But yes, that will be important. I understand that, and...
And we would, we'd have some sort of a hearing. Even if it were an A&R, we would, we would still add the neighbors in to, to talk about it.
One dilemma that this situation presents for Susan and Arthur Murphy is that their proposal, or at least the one they prefer, because it involves going into their lot, has to be a subdivision.
Right.
It's not an A&R. And because it has to be a subdivision, you have to consider the condition of the roadway, and you can condition the subdivision approval on doing certain things to the roadway. On the other hand, because that would also benefit other landowners, I don't think it should be something that the Murphy's should bear on their own, and that's why this is the right way to go about this discussion.
Subdivision is, I guess that's right. I mean, if Peter doesn't say, "I'm not, I don't want to subdivide my property right now just to, so I can pay a lot of extra taxes, since I don't want to build," if it wants you to subdivide, you're, you really got to build, so...
That's why it's taken this long to get here. You know, you have to be thinking that you're really ready to pursue.
Right. Are you really ready is the question for you, Peter.
So my question is, what is the timeline of the Murphys? If they're building for, or they're hoping to build for a family member, is there some timeframe associated with that?
Well, they're here, so I wonder, would you mind if they came up and addressed that?
We had good news. This weekend, my daughter was in from Seattle, and, well, we already knew that her husband's firm has been transferred to Boston, and there's a good chance that they'll be coming here with their grandchild. I'm not sure I need this. Do I need this?
You do need it for, you need it for the...
Oh, for the microphone.
People at home.
More important, I guess. And so, as a result, we're, we think there's a good chance that they're, they'll be moving within, within... within, within the year. Now, we're, we're at, we're talking about putting one extra house on our six-acre lot, but we do need the, the only approach that we would have for that, for that lot that would be going into Milton mainly, Milton and partially Canton, the only approach is on our, on our, on our driveway extension that we're asking for approval for, because that's all high land, and everything else that belongs to the Shellers, if we had to purchase it, is low lands, and that's land that would go to the DCR. And, and we would, even if we did buy that land from the Shellers, if we had the money, we don't, we haven't negotiated that yet, if we, even if we were to buy that land from the Shellers, we would not put our driveway on the Sheller's land that we would be buying in order to be able to satisfy the A and R rights. So, we're trying to get a, an extension of Avenue A, which is all high lands, and, and that's where we would have our driveway going on up to the Milton land, and we think it's going to happen pretty soon, we're hoping.
So, it's not next week, but it now looks more likely than.
All right. Well, I, I'm thinking that you're probably going to come in with a preliminary plan, and if it's a preliminary plan in which everyone has participated, so much the better. And then we'll have a hearing on it, and if it looks good to go, it probably will be good to go.
Well, that sounded, that sounded like what we thought would be the way to proceed after the last week. We know that you wanted to get some idea of what Peter Hicks was looking at, and I think it works together, because I think if we proceed that way, and, and if there are costs, which there will be, to improving the road, there'd be some discussion at least as to whether those could be shared, and that would make a difference.
I mean, as I mentioned at the beginning, when Hoye bent the, the road just a little bit, there are ways to design a road that isn't going to be unduly destructive. So, a good road builder is, or road designer is always helpful.
Well, we'd be more than interested, we, David Crispin's an excellent engineer and has good resources, but would certainly be interested in any suggestions.
And Hoye's a great architect, so there you have it.
Well, I agree. I think there's some good minds working on this.
Right. Well, thanks for coming in.
All right, thank you. This was really helpful. Thank you very much. Appreciate you taking the time.
And now, we're going to discuss what we've all been waiting for, zoning. And I've done some work on the, on what was sent out as the, what we, what we've.
Before you do that, can I make one motion to approve the minutes? Do you need more than April and I to approve the minutes?
No.
No, I say.
Okay. With one tiny tweak.
Yeah.
I just want it noted that I recused myself on the number five, new business. That's all. That's great.
Okay. We'll say.
Shared covenant, I recuse myself. Do you need a reason? I recuse myself because we have a shared covenant.
No, 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 we don't need a reason. We'll just, just say Denise Swenson accused herself. And with that, well, we've got a motion to approve these things, and.
A second.
All, all in, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
They're approved. Now, did I throw enough of these copies to give you one?
Did you get temporary signs?
Lauren, did you get one of these things that I marked up?
I did not.
Because, okay, here's another one.
Thank you.
And, here's some more.
Thank you.
Now, we had a, we sent out, we don't have a copy of the structurally sound article.
No.
Well, we.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
I made a proposed, I am, the selectman said, what was it? Deborah Felton would like to have a article in the zoning saying that buildings shall be structurally sound and safe.
The one, the one that you sent last night?
Yeah.
You have an email?
That went to the board.
It did go to the board. We don't have it now, though.
Oh.
We don't have it here.
Right. And if, how, well, yeah.
I have copies. I printed it out.
I can get it. And, so Deborah said, shall we, shall I go out? She said, there's a house next to me, the chimney's falling off, the, the railings on the porch are falling down, and it's an eyesore, and it's unsafe. And I suggested that a zoning article requiring that buildings be structurally sound and safe would appear to make sense. It's probably somewhat duplicative of, of current law, but it didn't sound to me like it would, it would hurt, and so Deborah went to the selectmen, and they said, well, this is something the planning board should suggest, and I suggest that we submit this as an article, and if we have to withdraw it for whatever reason, we could do so. So, what do you think? Why don't you read the article, Denny, since you have it?
Well, it's very quick. You, you, I mean, do you want me to read yours, your language?
To see whether the board.
Okay, you said, "To see if the town will vote to amend Section 5 of the zoning bylaws by adding a new subsection 1 entitled Maintenance of Buildings in any zoning district."
I think it's section, capital I.
Oh, I'm sorry, capital I. Subsection, capital I, entitled Maintenance of Buildings, in any zoning district, all buildings shall be maintained in a structurally sound and safe condition by their owners or other responsible persons.
So, what happens if they're not?
Then the building inspector says, "I've been cruising around town, and I know that you have a structurally unsound, unsafe building, and I'm going to cite you for violation of the zoning, requiring that your building be structurally sound and safe." And the owner would say, I guess I'd better fix it.
I have no objection.
Is structurally sound, I mean, and safe?
It's, it's pretty. It isn't, doesn't sound to me to be subjective.
Okay.
It seems to me to be, doesn't it sound pretty objective to you, Bill?
It doesn't. I'm looking for it right now.
It's in the email. It's in the email to you, July 26th. Well, July 26th at 5:01 PM, you sent it to me and the rest of the planning board. So, in your sent box, if that helps you, July 26th at 5:01 PM.
All right. Well, I looks at that. I also report that the selectman came up with an article on hours for contractors working, noisy contractors, and I pushed back with what I thought was a condensed version that had, that had the same hours, which would be seven to seven on Monday through Friday, I think eight through five on Saturdays, and 10 to three on Sundays for contractors using machinery, chainsaws, and lawn mowers and leaf blowers. So, unless there's a construction management agreement in place, which could be more restrictive or less restrictive, but this is really designed to cut down on the, on the noise without trying to totally eliminate it. I mean, it doesn't reply, it doesn't apply to residents the way I look at it, just because I, I think that people would resent being told they can't mow their lawn because it's 3:30 on Sunday.
Exactly. I would resent that, yeah.
Right, I would be, I, I mean, I would be extremely upset. So, it's, it's a contractor noise provision, as I see it, and it, you know, it, it, I sent an email to Katie Conlon today and said, you know, this is something that Brian has taken the position should come from the selectmen rather than the planning board, so the planning board has no current intention of sponsoring the article, but if you'd like the planning board to co-sponsor it, ask us, and we'll, you know, at our next meeting, we'll consider it. So, that's just informational.
And does it include holidays? You cited hours.
Right. It includes, holidays which, on which the New York Stock Exchange is closed, is the same as Sundays, but things like Columbus Day would be the, the usual. You know, if, if most people are working, there's no reason that contractors shouldn't work. Don't you feel that's right, Bill, the way it should be?
I do. I kind of question that New York Stock Exchange when it comes to, like, Good Friday. They're closed.
Well, no, but it's not a legal holiday. So, you see, it's legal holidays on which the New York Stock Exchange is closed, and Good Friday is not a legal holiday.
Okay.
So, we're, we're good to go.
Yep.
Good point.
One in a thousand lawyers.
What?
I said, one in a thousand lawyers. I'm quoting somebody that I know that says that about lawyers. You asked me a couple of minutes ago for the, the wording from Deborah Felton. It's on the board behind you. I was looking for an attachment that's not in an attachment. This is her idea that was sent to Alex. This is what I sent to the board.
Right.
Can you read it out loud?
Well, I don't think, this is what Deborah said, and I said, Deborah, here's some language to get what you want, and she said, this is great, and she took my language to the, so not this language, no.
She took, no, that one. Look, that one.
No, go to the next one. Got it.
That's what Denny just, that's what Denny just read.
Do you want me to read it again, Mary?
Okay.
All right. So, we're going to send that in, and if anyone, you know, if, if they say this is unnecessary, this is stupid, we can handle it.
Okay.
But I think it, it, it's okay. So, now, let's, let's dash through these things.
You're sending that as a zoning article?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, can I ask one question about this? Is it possible to add something about the maintenance of your yard?
No.
All right. Well, we'll talk about that for next October.
Yes, it is, no, it, it's, it's more difficult when you get, because you can't have a structurally sound yard or a safe yard. You want to have a tidy yard, is what you want.
Yeah, I know.
And I understand, but tidy is, is more difficult.
Okay.
It's a more difficult, we will work on this.
I'm going to hold you to that.
It's like the, it's like.
September 2018, watch out. Here we come.
It's like, it's like the revolving fund. We, we're still looking for a community that has one of these and haven't found it yet.
The traffic?
No, the revolving fund for traffic, yeah. So, we're going to probably push this one to May.
Okay.
Okay. So, take a look at these.
Which one do you want to start with? Temporary signs or?
We'll start with temporary signs.
Okay, okay.
And we have a number of comments, as you know. We've got comments from, and, and we have a comment matrix that Lauren made. Does everyone have their comment matrix?
Let's.
Oh, yeah.
Distribute the comment matrix. I put them in the red line documents instead.
Right. But in any event, the comment ma.
It's this one.
Is somewhat. For the board members, it's, it's in the thing. For the sign review committee, it's not all there. So, if we look at temporary signs, you can see that there was some pushback about the size of the signs. So, I've suggested no more than 16 square feet, which would be, these are temporary signs in a residence district, no more than 16 square feet, which would be four by four, five by three.
Okay.
And we say no more than five feet in any direction because there was talk that six feet might be too much. So, that's my suggestion. What do you think?
I'm with you.
Did you see the red line version with John Ziegler's comment on this?
Well, that's what I was wondering, which copies I were reading.
I think that.
Thoughts like this.
He said no more than six square feet. He suggested no more than six square feet, and I think that we're just asking for trouble if the only sign you can have on your property is two by three. I mean, I.
For temporary signs, John's comment is, in my view, the area the face sign should be a square foot number. If this is the intention, then the amendment should be revised to no more than six square feet. If this is not the intention, then I would suggest a modification to the proposed amendment as follows. No temporary sign shall have a face dimension of no more than six feet in either direction.
Okay. So, this accommodates, as I say, somehow we lost our, our total sign area, but I'm saying 16 square feet. John says six square feet. I think 16, four by four is not an unduly large sign, and I think we're just asking for legal trouble, trying to make it so teeny that you, people can't run for office or express themselves.
We don't, we don't consider political signs temporary signs.
They are temporary signs. We do consider them temporary signs.
But we do not, we do not regulate them. We use them, we put them under freedom of speech.
Well, we don't have a freedom of, of speech department. They're temporary signs, Bill. And, and you know, the bylaw says you can have temporary signs, and they can be political signs, expressions of opinion signs, they can be yard sale signs, they can be whatever signs that people want to be. And the reason, as we get to the commercial signs in the business district, the reason I don't say that these permanent signs can be used in the residence district on non-conforming structures is that if you allow them on non-conforming structures, you've got to allow the same sort of permanent signs on all structures, whether or not they're commercial or not. So, I want to, I don't want this to be litigated. I don't want the, we want, currently, temporary signs have no size maximum. I think six square feet is totally unreasonable. I think 16 square feet is pretty small.
Yeah.
But I reduced it from 26 square feet, which was in the original, I think.
And is there, if somebody needs a sign, temporary sign that's larger than this, is there a mechanism for them to go to the sign review committee and ask for?
No.
So, this is it?
Not, not in a residential district. Residential district requires the selectman.
Okay. But they could seek relief from the selectman and get a 20-foot, square foot sign if they choose?
They could, yes.
If we pass this bylaw?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm perfectly comfortable with it.
Well, they can get a. Well, unless he changes that line in it, too.
I mean, that's not... It's easily said yes, but I'm not sure that it's the right yes.
Oh, man.
3B3. Temporary signs are permitted. So you want to have a selectman exception.
Well, I'm not saying I want to have that. My question was, does that... Is there...
And of course, we've currently, on our signs, we've put the sign review committee... Currently, it's the building commissioner who works with the sign review committee. And then if someone's dissatisfied with the building commissioner, they go to the Board of Appeals. So we've taken the selectmen out. But there is... Bill talked to John Leonard. And John Leonard said, I don't want to do these signs. I think the selectmen should do them. And we're going to confirm that with him. And if, in fact, we've got to change it, we're going to put the selectmen back as the review body.
Okay. Nobody wants to do signs themselves.
But the selectmen are going to consult with John Leonard. You have a question now?
I have a point of what you're talking about. What... The article that you have here is to amend Section 3B3. So 3B3 is temporary signs.
Right.
But we did not take and change 3C, which is exceptions. And number two under there is any sign permitted by the Board of Selectmen as necessary for public safety or the public health.
Well, I understand that. But these are... These are going to be these banners over the streets saying, come to...
The strawberry festival.
I understand that.
Strawberry festival.
But to answer April's question, she said, well, does... What if I want to go bigger? And the answer is, go down to C and under exceptions. And exceptions C2 is any sign permitted by the Board of Selectmen as necessary for public safety or public health.
If it's not... You see, the strawberry festival is not a public safety issue. It's a fun issue.
So my question was, is there any form of relief? Should someone need a bigger sign? And I think the answer is...
We'll make a form.
Okay.
We'll make a form of relief for...
And I guess my point is, I think 16 square feet sounds perfectly reasonable. But there could be some scenario in the future that doesn't fit under health or safety that we might make accommodation for...
What?
Before some other board that's not us. I'm not agnostic about who that is.
Okay. I'm going to write here, we need a safety valve.
Yeah.
Safety valve.
Safety valve.
And...
And I think the safety valve should include some sort of blessing of the sign review committee.
I think so.
Yes.
It probably... They can go to the sign review committee for the safety valve.
Right.
Safety valve to sign review committee. Okay. Now, we'll send this in. And as you know, we'll have an opportunity to review it again and see if you like the safety valve on August 10. So let's go to the next one.
All right, I have another question.
You have another question?
These are due to the selectmen August 7.
Right. We're going to send it in. I'm going to write a safety valve. I'm going to give it to Lauren. We're going to get it done. And you're going to... You are going to take this packet of stuff to the selectmen and make sure they get it.
Yes.
On time.
Yep.
Okay.
When are we going to have our hearings?
We're going to have the hearing sometime in September.
Oh, good, okay.
It's going to be a lot of fun, too.
I am expecting it.
Okay. Pre-existing non-conforming structures. The language was a little two-family. I don't know why I used double family, but I did. But it's a two-family. And I've... You know, the structure doesn't extend itself. So I changed the language a little bit without changing the meaning in any way. See what I've done?
Yep.
It's not... It's the same. It's exactly the same. And I took out the word "or" "extension" because there's no... It isn't used anywhere else. Extension is the only thing that's used. And this incorporates Brian's comments, saying... Everyone's seen Brian's comments.
Yes.
All Brian's comments have been incorporated in these... In these... In what we have here.
So there was a comment by... Made by Cheryl.
What was it? Oh, the 300 feet, good.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you incorporated that with Marion. Marion made it, too.
Who came up with the 300?
Marion.
Marion suggested that.
And I suggested 500.
Right. But this one says 300.
This one is... Does say 300.
Cheryl wants us to go back to five.
Oh, she does, okay.
From her email, right?
Do you want me to read her comment?
Yes, please.
Cheryl's comment on pre-existing and non-conforming structures. The proposed change to 300 feet from 500 feet is of concern to me. Would you be able to take a section of the RC District and mark with a circle each dimension so we can get a better idea of the implication of each of these dimensions? I sent that to her. I have a copy of it here.
Can we pull it up?
She wanted to look at that, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for remembering Cheryl. So many things coming.
No, we have them down in here. Do we put them in here?
No. You have access to them.
You're not going to do what you think? You're going to your email?
No.
So this...
What we did is, we took... We took an area in Zone C.
Yeah.
We took a 300-foot a butter circle.
Yeah.
And then we took another on the same property and made it go at 500.
Okay.
To see what the difference would be.
How many houses?
It actually takes the neighboring street out of the mix. When you look at it, we use 300 feet when we do an butters list for any zoning that goes out now.
Yeah.
That's whether it comes from the planning board, the zoning Board of Appeals. If you go to CONCOM, it's only 100 feet.
Okay.
Picking 500 may be perceived, you know, capricious because we're just looking for a number. How did you come up with that number? 300 at least has something to do with zoning, which is why we stuck with the 300. You want to go 500. It does add in that much bigger a layer if you're in a Zone C. In a Zone AA, you may pick up nobody. You may pick up one. You may pick a, you know...
Nothing.
But in Zone C, it could get expensive if you have to notify all those people in that area.
You don't have to notify them.
But no, it's not notice.
You just have to look at the design of their houses on the chart and see where the non-conformities are. So you want to do 400?
No, I want to do 300. But I would love to see the map.
I'm good to go with 300.
The reason why I say that is because I think the smaller lot sizes are the ones that are going to have the non-conformity.
Right. I... You know, in B, I don't think... And I think B was... Doesn't have anything that's old in it. And A has a number of non-conforming houses, but they're still on pretty big lots.
I guess I'd like to see it to understand it.
I'll give it to you, hold on.
Because the idea is that you want to look
Consistent, right.
So it can work in that neighborhood.
If we've got 300 feet now, we could expand... I think we could expand it and make it more liberal rather than restrict it further.
Well, that's true.
So in other words, I'm thinking that if Cheryl looks at this and says, I still think it should be more than 300 feet, well, I think we can just put in a bigger distance.
So what I was thinking is, we're trying to help people get out of the variance process, which is costly. But if we're making them measure the non-conformity of every house within 500 feet of theirs, that's going to be pretty costly, too. Are we actually saving anybody time or money?
Okay.
I see what you're saying.
But I mean, it would be helpful to have a visual. If they can pull it up, great. If they can't, then...
Okay. So we'll submit it the way it looks here.
Or do you want to change it to five? I don't know. It's up to you, guys.
I say start with 300.
And we can expand it if necessary. I tend to agree with you that there is no point in making people jump through too many hoops.
Then it might be cheaper to go to further variance.
It's sort of the two houses on either side of you, in the C zone, that you're worried about, I think. And I think 300 feet does that very well.
Well, here we are.
Okay. Now, this is a 300-foot circle.
That's plenty.
Look at how many people that is. That's what I was thinking. I mean, 500 is excessive.
If I change the 300 to a 500?
That's...
I mean, that's half the town.
That's half the town, right.
I just grabbed all those people.
Okay. Let's go with 300.
Okay. Thank you for that. That helps.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
Bicycle parking?
Oh, bicycle, okay.
I added in the words "in any district."
That was the only change, in the comma?
Yeah. Well, no... Yeah. That's the only change. And then the bylaws, it's the bylaws updating. It's bylaws plural. It's the zoning bylaws and the general bylaws that we have plural.
I'm just looking to see what the comments are from. And I don't know...
Which one am I looking at?
Bicycle parking.
Bicycle parking got no comments.
Okay, no comments, okay.
No ordered bylaw updating access.
Okay. And did Lee have any comments on bicycle parking?
I didn't know if you were going to discuss it or not. I haven't seen it, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Why don't we...
He's a very thoughtful person from the community.
Give him a... At least let you... We'll come back to it if you raise your hand.
Yeah, I'll just pass.
But we don't... We don't want you to get too...
Is your copy available?
Yeah, she's going to...
Here, it's the top half.
All right. Sorry.
Is that with... Okay. So bylaws updating and access. I just... I've just repeated that the zoning bylaws have to be just like the general bylaws. And I took out, as we agreed, to allow the planning board to maintain unofficial copy of the zoning bylaws, which is not to say that if we don't have an official copy, we will have an unofficial copy because they're very useful. Prohibition of marijuana establishments. This, I'm suggesting that... This is language which Town Council came up with, so I didn't get too excited. Except as far as the zoning is concerned, I think that we should specify where in the zoning these things are going to go. And this article should add a new subsection T. That's not an I, it's a T. To Section III, Roman numeral III.
That's of the one for the zoning bylaw.
That's for the zoning. And I...
We'll rely on the town clerk to come up with where it goes in the general bylaw.
I guess so. I was looking at the general bylaw. I was... It needs some work. I don't know how we can, you know, pledge to support the bylaws of the town if we don't know what they are. When we get sworn in, you know we're supposed to pledge to support the bylaws of the town? And then we don't have anything that... In any event, we will. Because this are... In any event, subsection T on this one, on marijuana. Then we go to the next designation of sections. And what we do is, we designate the great estates bylaw as subsection Q of Section 3. We designate the ice house as subsection R of Section 3. And we designate the temporary moratorium on marijuana establishments as subsection S of Section 3. And there is a reason why it's Section S because the next... The next, the subsection T that we just did also deals with marijuana. So we're... We took this a little bit out of order so that the temporary moratorium will come right before the permanent... Permanent... What are we doing? We're... Prohibition.
Prohibition.
The permanent prohibition of these establishments. And then, next...
Can I ask a question on that?
After this, all together, we're going to repeal the temporary moratorium.
And that's why I'm asking, shouldn't we maybe call it S? Since if it passes, the other one goes away.
No, the other one will stay in until it goes to... I mean, the other one has to go to town meeting. I mean, when Section T passes, it's going to need Attorney General approval. And rather than... It just seems to me it's easier to repeal it once Section T is... To repeal subsection S at the time that subsection T gets Attorney General approval. It doesn't matter that the temporary moratorium and the permanent prohibition are both in the bylaw at the same time. And we will get rid of the... And we will get rid of the, we'll get rid of the temporary moratorium as soon as we feel comfortable that it no longer serves a purpose.
Right. I agree with that.
It'll flow to the amendments page eventually.
Right. It will, we will, we will make sure that it doesn't kick around. Which reminds me, we have a section of our bylaw, section 4B, which is wetlands regulation. And it says that the selectmen are the enforcing authority.
The special permit granting authority.
Right.
Which, how'd that come about?
We don't know. But in any event, I'm hopeful that the Conservation Commission is going to agree that this is a useless waste of paper, this particular provision. But we'll see. We're pushing away. Any word on that?
I concur.
No, I understand, but...
But I think the issue here is, in 1972, we put that in.
Right.
Also, in later, in 1972, the Clean Water Act went into effect. The Clean Water Act is what gave us our, the Conservation Commission, the power that it has. So, it became a, it's kind of redundant. And to take and make the selectmen a special permit granting authority, which they do not give special permits, the special permit granting authority for the rest of our zoning is the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Appeals. But somehow or another, the selectmen got into the mix, too, and I don't really know how that happened.
So, are we going to put forward an article?
Well, now, we're going to, we're pushing the Conservation Commission to decide what they'd like in 4B. We don't have anything, we don't want to pull the rug out from under their feet, but we would like this thing to be useful.
The other part is, zoning comes, zoning, for the board's purposes, is chapter 10. The wetlands bylaw for the town is chapter 15. So, the Conservation Commission has its own chapter in our, in our bylaws.
The general bylaw says, if you want to know about wetlands regulation, look at the zoning bylaw, rather than, this is what the general bylaw says, rather than look at section 15, like, chapter 15 of the general bylaws.
So, maybe Bill and Lauren can figure out how to solve that come springtime.
They've been, they've been given the, they've been asked to come up with something. Now, okay. We're finally getting to advertising signs. And, my goodness.
So buckle up. We're going to be here all night.
No, we're not going to be. I don't, I don't see that we're going to be here all night. I put up, I mean, as you can see, all Brian's stuff is in this.
Is in yours? Okay, good.
We got a, we got a thing from the building commissioner.
Yes, I saw.
Saying he'd like these to be applicable to signs on nonconforming businesses in the residence zone. And I said, sorry, no can do.
So, why is that no can do? I feel like I brought this up, too.
Because the Supreme Court in Reed versus Town of Gilbert says you can't have, content-based signs are no, no good. You can't restrict signs based on their content.
In a residential district.
Anywhere. But we think that there is an exception for commercial districts. And we're proceeding on that basis.
But are we issuing the, are we regulating the content of the sign?
We're certainly regulating the content of commercial signs. But we're doing it in the business district for businesses. And we say that you can have all the signs that you can have in the residence zone, but if we said businesses in the residence zone can have all the signs that you, businesses have in the commercial district, then...
Pandora's box.
Why would residents not be able to have all the signs that you can have in the commercial district, you know, without regard to content? So, I think that the, the exception for business signs is available. I think that, I recall that the Supreme Court indicated that there was that exception.
So, he's talking about pre-existing, nonconforming business signs that exist today by variance.
Yeah.
So, isn't that narrow enough?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we're saying, if you want a sign, get a variance.
But we can't apply these rules to the ones that already have a variance.
I mean, the Board of Appeals could look at these rules and, and use them in deciding whether or not to give a variance.
I suppose the signs I'm most concerned with are not the ones that exist by variance, but that just exist.
Right. Well, no, the board, I mean, we're, if...
Conversation for another day.
I just don't want to touch the residence zones. I think we can, we can do this in the commercial zone. And we've got some great lawyers in our town meeting and on our, out in the... If people say you can't do anything about signs, I don't think that's right. I think that this is okay.
All right.
Okay. So, I, if you look at the side of this, you'll see that I have freestanding signs, because people said they wanted a freestanding sign. And you'll see, I said at the end, such sign, and then I said text of projecting sign. And the text of the projecting sign, if you look at the last sentence in projecting signs, it says, "Such sign shall not extend above the building, be more than six inches, six square feet in area, six inches in thickness, nor consist of more than two faces, each of which shall count in computing sign area." It's that sentence that we're going to stick into...
Freestanding?
The freestanding sign, which would, which would be, which should do it, shouldn't it? It's a six-square-foot sign. Is that too big for a freestanding sign? Three by two?
Well...
I don't think so.
But if it has two sides and we're computing both faces?
Yeah. But, but, I mean, each one goes towards the total. It doesn't go towards the, each one goes towards the total. Subsigns.
Which shall count in computing sign area.
Okay. So, on each, be more than six square feet in area...
On each side.
On each face.
Okay.
Is that the right, Bill? You know about how big these freestanding signs are. How big are they?
Three by two sounds about right.
Three by two is okay for a sandwich frame. What we actually have on the next page under sidewalk signs...
Yeah.
Is 24 by 48. So, that's eight.
So, that's 24 by 36, because Brian...
Well, that's a two-foot by four-foot.
I understand, but he, Brian reduced the 48 to 36.
Okay.
Look at the, do you see the little cross out there? How big is that? 24 by 36?
Yeah, 24 by 36.
Two by three.
It's three, so it should be nine square feet.
Oh, wait.
There's a 24 by 36.
Yeah, that's two by three.
That should be, that's the size, that should probably be the size of a freestanding sign, shouldn't it?
Yeah, and that's consistent.
So, that's more than six square feet. It's how many square feet?
Oh, 24 by 3, so two by three is six.
That's us, thank you.
It's six square feet.
How big is that?
Question myself there for a second.
That's a two by three.
Two by three.
Yeah.
So, that's six square feet?
Yeah. That's perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
On each face. Thank goodness.
Am I calculating six square feet wrong? What's wrong with me?
Can I back up? Sorry.
Yeah.
Wall sign.
Yeah.
The total area of all flat wall signs shall not exceed 50 square feet on any wall of the business establishment. So...
One wall.
One wall. So, that's five by 10? Or like, you know what I mean? That's like a, and then we have, it can be seven-eighths of the facade of the business establishment?
Yeah.
Trying to picture that. It just seems like an awfully big sign.
Well, it can't be more than 12.
I mean, there is a, two square feet for each horizontal linear foot, is the... I took, look, Emily Innis...
No, you did a great job.
I, I took, no, but I took what she said, and if these sign things are wrong, we need to know it.
I'm just trying to picture it.
But John didn't, John didn't, didn't...
Object to that.
I don't see that he did.
He did have a comment.
Oh, he did. Thank you.
What did he say?
What did he say?
Well, so he says he agrees with Ray. Ray said wall signs usually need to be below the second-story windows, which is addressed here. John, on the say, suggests that we say instead, a flat wall sign should be located to define or enhance the architectural elements of the building, not obscure or obliterate them.
But he didn't say anything about the square footage maximums, the 50 square feet.
No, not the wall signs.
But the piece about not obscuring the feature is actually really important.
Okay. Well, I said that a flat wall sign may be located below the second-story windows, if any, or the first-story cornice, provided that it does not conceal any part of a window or significant architectural details, does not go above the cornice or roof line, and its length does not exceed seven-eighths of the facade of the business establishment, which, that's how I addressed John's comments.
Yeah. Okay, well, I...
So, the size that you came up with, Alex, was based on Emily's suggestions to you? Or...
Yes.
Okay.
She came up with a signed bylaw, and I drew from it.
Okay. And Brian didn't have anything specific on that?
I, no one has, no one has been, I mean, we've discussed...
Well, let's see if it comes up in public hearing, because...
Right. We can probably reduce it.
Yeah. If it comes up, I, I'm just having trouble picturing that.
Right. Well, I am, too, but...
So, okay.
Yeah, I agree. It sounds awfully large, but I also feel like maybe we should...
If it's under, if it's only on one story...
Yeah.
Okay. We'll see. We'll see what the public...
Okay. We can, and also, we can, you know, if we get a sign expert, we can ask John, we can ask John to, for a little more input on this for our next meeting.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you. Next page.
Okay, so the freestanding sign.
The next page is...
We do projection signs?
Did we do that?
We just did that.
Right underneath the wall?
I reduced...
We just discussed it.
Was it 10 to 8 that I said? Eight, yeah, eight feet above ground level.
Okay.
Because that's what they said they do in Boston. And not more than six square feet on each face, because that's what he said they do in Boston.
Right. Total of 12. It's six on each side, not, right.
Right, on each face.
John also suggested a maximum of six inches in thickness.
Right. And we have that.
One other comment that the building inspector came up with was that a projection sign has two faces. It has two faces, but it's considered one sign.
Right. And we say six square feet in area on each face.
Right. But it's...
And then you add them together, adding your total.
I understand that, but he wanted it in here, that the definition of two faces is still, it's one sign.
It is. It's defined as a projection sign.
Okay.
That discusses two faces.
He put it in for...
Did he have language?
We say it doesn't, can't consist of more than two faces.
Two faces equal two signs, question mark?
It doesn't have to have a sign on each side. It can have a sign on just one side. A text on just one side. In any event, look, I think this...
Yes, it could. But it most likely won't.
I think it does it, Bill. Take a look at this language.
Okay. I'm reading Mr. Prandak's comments, so that's good.
You'll see that I did my utmost to comply with them.
Yep.
Okay. The directory sign, I, Denny said, this sounds crazy to me, and it looks sort of crazy to me. I thought that would be something I...
Wait, which one is this?
I don't see why you need a six by, a six-foot, a nine-square-foot directory sign. That's three by three. I guess that's okay. And not be more than six feet in height. I mean, Brian said not more than six feet in height, so I...
It's a directory sign that would be used at the entrance of a business park type of thing?
Yeah. So, that would be a foot and a half, if it's six feet in height, it'd be a foot and a half wide.
Do we have any of these today?
Right, I suppose so. They're little, they're little size next to doors.
I have one that's proposed right now.
For what?
How big?
For 80 Adams Street.
How big?
There's 15 offices in that building.
How big?
This is like a four by eight. It is big.
All right. So, this is...
The other one, a directory is usually a small sign.
Four by eight.
The biggest directory I can think of that we have is on two Granite Ave.
Yeah.
And you pull in, there's a directory, but it's underneath.
All right.
The second one to that would be, is a small law office on Granite Ave beside Dependable Clean is a very small directory sign.
Yes.
But this is, is...
Not nine square feet, probably.
It's one by one, one by two.
All right. So, you're saying that nine square feet is, is reasonable?
I think, I mean, it's not like we're going to have this huge industrial park with 27 businesses to be listed. This seems fine.
And it isn't even a directory sign if you have 27 businesses. Each one would have their own sign.
Well, I don't know.
In the same building?
Sometimes when you drive into a business park, they have a big directory. That's why I couldn't picture it, why we would have that.
Falcone has a, a listing sign for his business.
How big is it?
Where is it? It's on the facade.
No. Well, yes, there's one on the facade, but they also have one at the street.
How big is it?
I bet he's four by 12.
It's four feet by 12 feet?
Yep.
Way up?
Yeah. Because it's, it's the Falcones', and it lists all of the different people.
Yes, there's a good example. That has the dentists, multiple dentists.
All right. So, it's six feet high. It needs to be at least two and a half feet wide. So, it should be 15 square feet?
Half feet high.
It's, now, we've got nine, but we probably should have more than nine. About 15.
Well, I just don't want to create an opportunity where somebody that has two businesses has a 15-foot sign.
Yeah, but they have to go to the sign committee.
Oh, that's true. The sign committee is the ultimate.
So, we'll see.
Cider.
15?
Okay, 15. All right. Let's put it in at least as a place folder. Like you said, we can always change it later.
Okay.
Are you going to limit the height?
It's limited to six feet in height.
Right. Okay. Should we add the word feet?
What? Yes. Feet. Now, John Zickowitz said, "No signs on awnings." So, what I did was, I just, and Denny says, "I don't want to have, I don't want to have continuous awnings." And I, I wanted to find out what people think about that.
I agree. Didn't John say something to that effect as well?
I think that came up at the last meeting. I think it was Brian or Cheryl that brought it up, but I...
I agree. There needs to be breaks.
"Awnings shall be a traditional slope form with no sides or valence, and shall not be continuous across the entire facade."
Can you say across more than one contiguous storefront?
Well, you, do you want, do you care if it's on, the whole storefront has a awning?
I'm thinking of it, because if you look now, Mr. Chance has his awning, then the next person has their awning, and the next, and there's space between them. So, they go with the storefront.
Right. And what you don't want is on the side of the building to have like this long, where there is actually no storefront, but you just have these long awnings that just gum up the whole...
Would anybody do that, though? If there's no window? I don't know. But I agree. I like the breaks.
For advertising, they would, because they would get their name.
But now, we're, now, we're not going to allow any lathering.
Okay. Well, it's a thought I leave it up to them.
Shall not be continuous across...
Beyond the storefront. Beyond the individual storefront.
More than one contiguous storefront, yeah.
Yeah. Beyond more than one contiguous.
Shall not be, not be what?
Go beyond.
And shall not extend...
And beyond.
Extend... Beyond a single storefront?
Right.
Is the sign for Franklin.
Oh, yeah.
There's a similar sign down at the Fruit Center.
Well, look at that directory sign.
Yeah.
Wow. You know, a picture is worth a thousand words.
Yes. Do you think that's more than six feet tall?
I would say so.
That's like 15 feet tall, or 12 at least.
Come on.
And, and, you know, I kind of like that sign.
I do too, it looks nice.
That's a very nice sign, and it.
There's been no complaints about it that we're aware of.
I think we need to say twelve, twelve feet high, or fifteen.
The size of the directory shall not be any larger than.
Not exceed fifteen square feet.
It's twice what the car is, you know it's over ten feet.
It's going to do the, it's sort of, it's a freestanding sign.
Can't be more than fifteen, no.
Yeah, that's more of a freestanding.
I bet it's twelve.
Twelve feet in height, shall be limited to twelve feet high.
I think it depends on the number of businesses in an establishment.
Yes, because if you have three.
How many square feet per business?
Oh, that's a.
Per business, well, that, that might be an issue. This one has, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. This has at least eight entities inside the building.
But it also has like a description underneath, like Dr. Sherman, optometrist, or dentist, or whatever, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and you have the address at the top.
See, if you zoom in closer, I think it describes, see, I can see dermatology or something like that.
Right.
Yeah, there they are, real estate broker, ophthalmologist. Oh, there he is, Dennis Sherman.
Yeah, I really like those kind of signs, because you have a village feel, you know?
That, that actually is their sign, because when you talk about a.
That's actually a freestanding sign.
It is.
A freestanding principal sign.
I can't show you, but right there underneath that tree is a directory that's on the wall, that has all those people's names.
Okay.
And it doesn't, it doesn't have the.
Description.
Donald McGee, optometrist, it just says Donald McGee.
We could say a secondary directory sign, of course, our freestanding sign is.
What's that? Oh, yeah, freestanding sign.
Is not, doesn't do it because, I mean, it is a freestanding sign, but we. But we limit its size. We limit its size.
Well, don't get discouraged, Alex, you did a quick.
No, I, I think that we want John, he's an architect.
We want some.
Let's ask John about the directory signs.
Yeah.
And we will, when we get his advice, we will put it into what we filed with the. You, you have that?
Because he's going to be ruling on this too, right, I mean, that's what this, this is all going to go before the sign committee, so.
And there's the.
I mean, they're going to have, be able to snipe if they want to.
That's right.
I mean, if they snipe now, it would be better.
There's another one.
It would be much better.
So that's the question, are these freestanding or are these directories?
That's a freestanding sign, because there is a directory on the wall, and unfortunately, this doesn't let me get into their property.
So we don't want directories to be fifteen feet tall there on the facade.
Those are freestanding signs.
So this would be a secondary.
Yeah.
A sign.
A, a directory should be, could be small.
So go back to the directory, you had nine square feet, and you had six in height, and that's good for the directory sign.
Nine and.
Nine and six.
Well, we'll say a secondary, a secondary directory sign.
Although, I don't know if we consider this a directory, the one at the end of the lot.
No, that, I consider that one a freestanding.
A, a principal sign. And what we can do is.
I actually agree with the nine feet now, after having looked at these for a directory, because you're talking about something that goes, it's small. It's just directing you where to go.
Right.
A freestanding sign is something completely different.
Yep, we will get back to nine and six.
It should come under the definition.
On freestanding, on freestanding, we could say, where we say. Not more than six feet in area on each face, we can say for each business. If it's a principal sign.
That might be the way to do it.
If it's a freestanding principal sign, yeah.
And we'd just say six square feet in area.
Per business.
On, in each, on each face for each business. Okay, shall we?
Okay, so that works, and that actually kind of, yeah, that was the projection again, okay.
We're going to have to revisit this again. Okay, and the next one is, are we agreed that no lathering on awnings?
Yes.
Okay, so what we're putting in is what John asked for. The building commissioner says the town administrator should regulate sidewalk signs. So.
I'm kind of wondering, just in general, are. We seem to be lacking in enforcement and enforcement resources.
We've got a, we've got a zoning enforcement guy about to come on, or woman.
That's where it should go maybe, because, I mean, I can see why the building commissioner doesn't want it, because he's having trouble enforcing all these development.
But you wouldn't put your enforcement person out there making the decision whether you can have a sidewalk sign or not.
Okay, so it's more of the decision.
No, I, I mean, the building commissioner would, would do what the town administrator specified.
But this is saying that the, the town administrator shall issue the permit for the sign.
Do we know this is something that Mike Dennehy wants to spend his time doing?
It's what he currently does, temporary signs are under his purview now.
And the building commissioner said that he wants the town administrator to do it.
He, he didn't want to take something away from Mike.
Right. And, and if the town administrator doesn't want it, I'm sure the building commissioner will get it back.
Yes.
But it, it, maybe we put in the sign review committee before them, but let's put in the town administrator, because it's what's done now.
Or his designee. Should it be the town administrator or his designee?
Or designee.
I, I think maybe we leave or his designee for the public hearing, and leave it this way now.
Okay.
I'd rather have less than more, I hear you, and I understand it, but.
No, I, I.
Before we go back to putting the, the sign review committee there, let's meet with them, ask them, and see. But right now, the town administrator is the person who approves temporary signs.
And we've asked him, and he says, yes, I want to keep doing this with my time, that's my question, I know that he's doing it now, but do we, do we really know that that's something he wants to be spending his time on?
It's sort of like the selectmen, or, or the, the board of appeals, if they don't want to do appeals, the selectmen are going to end up doing the appeals. And we'll change it around so that.
We just changed it from the selectman to the town administrator, we didn't change, the selectman changed it from them to the town administrator. Ann Marie got this about four months before she left.
That makes sense.
And Brian didn't want to even do any sandwich boards, remember that?
Yes, which I actually don't disagree with.
Having no.
I think they're kind of a mess, and I do agree with him that I think they become, you know.
Well, I, I think this hundred and fifty-foot rule is going to cause a lot of gnashing of teeth.
Such a sign, yeah.
But I, I, you know.
All right, well, I guess it would be good to hear from the public on that as well.
Hundred questions. On whether or not there should be sidewalk signs?
Yeah, I mean, they, they may feel strongly, and, and I, and I imagine the business community feels strongly about it. I'd be interested to hear the pros and cons. I thought Brian made excellent points at the last meeting, and.
Yeah, I, I don't know that, that even the businesses would be upset about that, because you only get the sign for forty-five days, unless they give the appointment for less, but you, they can. The max you can have it for is forty-five days.
Or thirty.
And you go on a waitlist, and you don't know.
Thirty's coming down.
Well, that's it, that's why I'm saying.
Where does it say thirty? This is, goes on forever.
It's under the second paragraph, the sign shall be erected upon issuance of a thirty-day permit.
Oh, oh, oh.
Town administrator issues the permits and then maintains a waiting list and all sorts of other stuff.
I hadn't, I hadn't, that hadn't, I hadn't registered on it.
We're changing forty-five from our current zoning to thirty.
Oh, well, I was, I was thinking that if you, you get a permit and you'd be good to go. All right, well, this is, this is, this is, I mean, how can anyone complain about this?
Unless you're the town administrator, that's why I'm saying.
Here are your thirty-day permits.
For a very busy guy, yes, maintaining his waiting list and all sorts of other things.
I would be interested to hear from the business community if they really want it, or they do it, because they have to keep up with the other businesses who do it, and it's really just something they'd all love to.
Well, we didn't.
Do away with.
We didn't.
Forget about it.
Because we may be bending over for the businesses that don't even want it.
We didn't get the.
And the community, I don't know how they feel about it, but, you know, the sidewalk access and bicycles and carriages and, I mean, I know it's supposed to be out of the way.
Well, that was my point, I mean, Alex added, in compliance with ADA requirements, which I think is very good, but who's out there on a day-to-day basis being like, oh, you put your sign out a little too far today in the middle of the ramp?
Yeah, and sometimes people probably just move them without even thinking about it, and, not even the business people, but just people are just like, oh, I'm going to move this because I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well.
Well, we'll see how the public hears this.
All right. If we go to our application.
Are you, did you go through window signs, sign permit, okay, application, I'm.
Do you have something about window signs?
No, I'm with you, keep going, application, the application.
The building inspector said, I want to do this electronically. That's what he said, and. If the building inspector wants to do it electronically, who am I to say, no, you've got to take paper applications in? And then shuffle them around, this is much easier, so, given the fact that it's all going to be electronic, we don't need four copies of this, that, or the other thing. So I eliminated the number of copies, and we can't get them in the, in the one-half inch equals one foot, because you, you can't do that.
Yes, you can.
No, you can't.
I know you can, but we're not going there.
We're not going.
Because that requirement will be made in the guidelines from the sign review committee. I mean, that, that's their rules and regulations, this is our zoning, we want our zoning to be tight, we're not looking for the specifics to be in here, we want the. This is the process, this is what you'll follow, now you want to go to the sign review committee, this is their guidelines, their guidelines are going to be that you have to have X amount of copies with elevations, you have to have. There, you need to have the scale, the, the idea of the scale is that when they see the plan, that if they don't like it, they can actually scale it out right then and there and come up with suggestions. And if it's scaled, they can actually come up with size, if it's not scaled, then it gets taken away from the meeting and it takes another meeting to get it correct.
Well, then it shouldn't be a completed application.
It's, it's the building department's completed application.
What, well, we don't have.
Because submit a completed building department application, which will specify area height.
We don't even have to say completed, but shall submit an application.
A building department application?
I mean, I really think it should say complete application.
Well, that's, that's fine.
Whether it's in here that we specify what a complete application is, or if it's in someone's guidelines.
The building commissioner has said is that it is a pretty sketchy little thing, because it's the application for a building permit, checking off sign. In, in other words, it's, it's, having a completed application is not that big, and we'd say that it will include these other things, but.
That's why, when I talked to Joe about it this afternoon, the issue was, the sign review committee needs these other issues, they need, you know, five copies for their members. They need, and it's six copies now, six copies for their members, and then it needs to be in a scalable form. They do need it to be electronic, because everybody gets it, they get it electronic, but at the same time, they are getting a hard copy.
So you wanted to say in scalable form?
No, I think for the purposes of the zoning, leave it the way that Joe wrote it, electronic plans, including dimensional information for the sign. When the sign review committee, when they apply to them, then they have to meet the rules and regs.
Have one set of instructions and have people do it once, as opposed to submit what they think is completed to building and then go to the next step and have to compile all sorts of separate information.
I think that becomes an issue for one of the, one of the sections for Joe's building permit, it, it has nodules. I think the nodule for signs needs to be more than, as Alex said, check this box, I want to sign. I think the nodule needs to go down and, and then ask you for the specifics that are here. We could do that, it isn't there now, but we could request that the nodule have this information.
If they can do it electronically, but this is all stuff that the sign review committee is going to request, right?
But that's what I'm saying, why don't we have a, a single entry point with everything that you need, as opposed to one entry here, and then, exactly, if it's electronic, you just send it to.
Of course, they get it electronically, and Joe sends it off to the sign review committee, and basically, the sign review committee should determine if it's, what they, what they need in addition.
But I know that when you file for the building permit, it is not sufficient for what the sign review committee looks at, I know the sign review committee asks for more information.
But I think that that's, I personally think that's okay, I, I mean, asking Joe to go through these applications and, rather than just hitting the button and sending it off to the sign review committee, for the sign review committee to do the. To say this, what, this is what we need on this particular sign.
Does the sign review committee have staff?
Are they volunteers?
So you review all the applications?
And Joe just sends them over, right?
Yes.
And you, if you say, you've got to give me X, Y, and Z.
I call, I call the sign, usually the sign company, and tell them this is what I need.
Okay.
Maybe there's a way, I don't think this needs to be in the zone, but maybe there's a way to clean that up, to eliminate that whole follow-up phone call. I'm sure there's a way we can put a link somewhere on someone's page that says, if you're applying for a sign, fill out this thing for the building inspector and then send this material to the planning department. To take it off your plate, I'm talking, just from an efficiency perspective.
We've had it both ways, it's, it's done one of these since I started.
All right, well, we can talk about this.
All right.
I agree with you, I'm, I'm not dissatisfied with this, except that the numbers are wrong, so that it, as it talks about fours and twos and.
Well, I've taken them out, because of course, if it's all electronic, you don't have to do that.
Okay.
He's following Joe's suggestions, taking those out. See, he's following Joe's suggestions.
I've got Joe's stuff here and it's still in there, that's why I'm confused about it.
Well, this is not Joe's stuff, this is tonight's stuff.
Sorry.
Okay.
He, he said he's making it digital, so you don't need the number of copies.
Okay, I think I'm looking at it.
You can't.
Okay.
Okay. I have a question.
Does he forward these things to you, the drawings, the cross-section, the color photograph?
I usually forward it to him, but.
But, okay.
So is that what you're asking, Bill, that one through seven or eight be eliminated?
I think, we need to have those, it's just a matter of.
They shouldn't be in the bylaw.
I don't know that they need to be in the bylaw as, as much as they need to be either in the, the nodule for. in the, the nodule for the building permit or, as I said, it's, it's a regulation request.
It's just, well, to have something in the bylaw about the application.
Because if, if, if in addition to these things, sign, cross-section, color, you need something that's to scale.
Maybe the idea is just to put in the simple language that you'll comply with the regulations of the sign review committee or the guidelines of the sign review committee.
Well, that, you know, is.
Pointed yourself back at a specific book.
That is, I, I think that in a way that's, that's fine. And I was thinking that, you know, this terrible problem we have about the size of the signs might be, it might be better handled in the design book.
Yeah.
And not have us try and invent the wheel here at.
Exactly. That's like us picking the color of a building or.
Right. You're, I, it, so.
You might be right.
So what are we suggesting? That we revise this to be a process?
What?
Are we suggesting we throw this out?
Well, no, I, I, we could throw a lot of it out, but.
Make it more of a process type of bylaw as opposed to a content?
Yes.
I, you know, I, I think just the way we've been discussing it, that we lock ourselves into something, I, I mean, we, we're looking at that, that big freestanding directory sign.
That we all liked. That would be in violation of our bylaw.
So great. It just seems to me that we wouldn't throw the whole thing out. We would simply. We would simply leave some details to the sign review committee and the sign design booklet.
The zoning is a process.
Right. So I'll, I'll put something together and we'll send it out and we can talk to Lauren about this before the 7th and see if we can get, I mean, we'll get something that we can submit.
So my personal opinion is that the sign review committee does a very good job and I'm more than comfortable putting this in their hands.
Yeah, well, I, I agree. And we, we want to, that's right. I, I agree. And, and having it in the design booklet is right where it should be because it really has to do with design.
And frankly, that makes it easier for them to amend.
Much easier.
Should there be some sort of change in technology or who knows what or design thinking?
You don't have to get a variance.
Right, right. Okay. Too bad we finished the whole thing and then realized this.
No, I, I. We needed, we needed, we needed tonight's discussion.
To talk it through.
Good.
Just to see if it, if it held together and it didn't hold together, so good. And we'll.
Okay.
So any motions?
What else do we have? Do we have anything else here? Oh. The sound.
Do you have amplified music? I, there's no way of measure, how do you measure it? And who measures it? The building inspector isn't going to measure it. And giving him a decibel meter, I mean, how does he use it?
Because he doesn't work at night.
How do we, I mean, currently, if someone's got a boombox in their window and they've got, you know, it's the middle of the night and people are dancing in the backyard, they call the police and the police apply the nuisance law. They said, you're making a nuisance, stop it.
Yep.
And if we were to, if we were to say, well, we don't like that, we want them to do something else, we'd need it to be.
Scientific.
Something that they can do in a common sense sort of way. I mean, when they see this going on, they, they, they know when to tell someone to tone it down because it's just common sense. And how you, how you zone common sense is, is hard. So we didn't get there. We did do the noise on the construction because, or at least the selectmen will probably do the noise on construction because you can limit the noise by limiting the hours.
Right.
But limiting the hours that people can play their radios would, would probably be a little touchy.
Yes.
Although I, I did hear something this week that we're actually doing, possibly with the Friends of Blue Hills, a citizen science project.
Yeah.
With people, citizens on Blue Hills, using a phone app to measure sound pollution.
Yeah, well, let's see how they do.
Okay.
And you can report.
Okay, I will look into this.
And if it works, if it works, we can, we can incorporate it.
May I make a request to discuss our budget in a future meeting?
Request to, for 2019? Or, or how we're going to spend the budget that we have?
How we're going to spend the budget that we have for this fiscal year.
I think that that is a very good thing to do.
Great.
Before you get off task, can you go back to bicycle parking?
Yeah.
Lee?
Any, any comments, Lee?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. No comments.
So you're going to vote?
What?
You're going to vote to accept as written here?
We didn't vote on any of these.
Well, we're going to vote to submit the articles as they have been or are to be amended.
You're going to do that now?
Yeah.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? All right, so we've got our marching orders.
May I ask what's on our agenda for the 10th?
We're having a big public hearing on 333 Broad Hill Road.
Oh, yeah.
So. That is, well, that will probably take a bit.
I'll make a motion to.
We can't get to that server.
To adjourn?
Should I make a motion to adjourn? Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn on the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, Mary.